Okay, well, thanks, everybody. We're gonna go ahead and call the meeting to order. Debbie, I guess you'll have to note attendance a little dynamically tonight, maybe. And basically, as you all are aware, the only, well, the initial item, I should say, of discussion requires that we adjourn to executive session. So we're gonna do that right off the bat. So we're gonna adjourn now to executive session under O R S 1926602A to consider the employment of a public officer, employee, staff member, or individual agent. So with that, we're coming out of executive session back into open session, and we will continue the conversation being led by Sarah regarding the superintendent search.
Thank you, Jonathan. All right, so first thing is interviews. We've identified, we're gonna do eight interviews. And on the adopted search calendar, we had already allocated April 22nd to the 25th for conducting the interviews. And I'm sure we all know they will be done virtually. So Debbie and I'm thinking Drew, we're gonna need some assistance setting those up in Zoom. The screening committee is gonna observe, but if possible, I would like them to have their video and their microphone turned off during the interviews. But I wanna be able to see their faces if we can when we do the facilitating the feedback. And obviously, we'll need their microphone at that point. Interviews are done in executive session, so there's that piece as well. And so what I need to get from you board members is an idea of what times work on those days? How late are you willing to go? And keep in mind that on the last day of interviews, we're gonna have another deliberation. And I would allocate a minimum of an extra hour for that, if not longer. And we will have some additional things to take care of once interviews are all done. So that has the potential to be a very long night or day. So let's start with April 22nd. What is the earliest we can start interviews on April 22nd?
I just wanna put out there that all of those days for interviews, I'm available at any time. So whatever works for everybody else, I am in.
Great, thank you, Shelley.
Me too. I'm open all four days.
Okay, wonderful.
I can do so. The dates are fine.
Okay.
I'm pretty free.
You're free.
I had a beach house rented to go clamming, but being as we can't go over there, I'm open.
I think I'm largely open.
All right. Irv, do you have any input on your schedule yet?
What was the date?
April 22nd, 23rd, 24th, and 25th are the days that were allocated for interviews. We don't have to use all of them, but we have a good smothering there to work with.
Well, I guess it depends on what time we start, so.
Yeah. So do you have a time that, you know, I can't start before this time? Do you have anything like that?
Well, I mean, the only reason I'm able to do six o'clock is because I stayed over here at the coast. So I'm staying in Tom's house, but he don't know that. So, yeah. So anytime after six, I could make it work for this go around.
Okay. And Jonathan?
Well, I can try to be pretty flexible. I got a lot going on right now on the farm, but I'll try to be as flexible as I can be. So I guess I'll say that. I mean, anyway, yeah.
All right, so the 22nd is a Wednesday, and the 25th is a Saturday. So what if we do two interviews every night, two on Saturday, and then have our deliberation? That's just an idea.
That sounds good.
It sounds good.
Could we start, could we start earlier on Saturday so that our deliberation time can be earlier?
Yes. Irv, do you have any restrictions to your, on your schedule for Saturday, the 25th?
Yeah, I won't be able to do it on Saturday.
Okay. All right, well, that, you won't be able to do it at any point on Saturday, the 25th?
Yeah.
Okay. What about Sunday, the 26th?
I mean, I'm gonna roll that out for me, so.
Roll out April 26th? Okay. Um. Hold on, I gotta, I gotta write this out and see how it looks. Okay, so we could do three Wednesday, three Thursday, two on Friday, and a deliberation. But that means, you know, if we're starting at six, these are gonna be some long nights, especially Friday.
How long do we give approximately for each interview?
Yeah, so interviews are an hour long, and we will have to build in additional time for feedback from the screening committee. So I would, I would give at least an hour and 15 minutes for each interview.
Can we start, can we start? I'm sorry, I left the room for a minute. It sounds like you guys were talking about 6:00 P M.
Yep.
Can, can we start at five? Is that just too early?
I think for one board member, five is not a possibility.
Not an option, okay.
Yeah. Irv, what, what about?
You could start without.
Oh. Well, here's the tricky piece. If, if you don't observe all of the interviews, it makes it really difficult for you to then jump in and be a part of the deliberation and identifying a top candidate. So it's really best if you experience all of them. Now, if you can't log in video, but you can on a phone and listen in, that will work.
Yeah, well, I could make that work.
At 5:00 P M?
Yeah, if I can call in.
Okay. Okay, all right. Let's say five. So we're starting at five. So that first interview on Wednesday, can everyone but Irv actually start at 4:30 so we can cover some things? Some, you know, going over how we're gonna ask the questions and all of that?
I can.
I can.
Yep.
Yep.
Cool, all right, so we'll say, let's say Wednesday, we're gonna start at 4:30, but our first interview is gonna start at five, and it's gonna go until 6:15. And then I'm gonna give a five-minute buffer, just because we're doing this virtually, and who knows what kind of weird technological issues might arise? So I'd like to put five minutes between the interviews. So our second interview will go from 6:20 to 7:35. Okay. Then we'll have 7:40 to 8:55? Did I do my math right?
Mm-hmm. Yep.
And so that'll be Wednesday. Thursday will be the same, sort of ending at 8:55. And on Friday, we'll start at five, go to 6:15. We'll have another one at 6:20, go to 7:35. And then at 7:40, we'll begin our deliberation. How does that sound?
It sounds good.
Great, okay.
On Thursday, are we starting at 4:30 again, or five?
On, so Wednesday, the 22nd, we're gonna start at 4:30, but Thursday, we're gonna start at five, which really, for you guys, would be 4:55. Let's log in at least five minutes early, just to make sure everything's working good. And same, same deal on Friday, 4:55. So I will, you know, draft this up a little bit more formally for you guys, and I'll send it out so you'll know, you know, what's happening at what time and all of that. And okay, so that's, that's our interview schedule. So I'm also going to contact the folks, the eight folks, and I'll get them scheduled on whatever days. And when I send the schedule, I'll say candidate number, whatever, at this time, so you know who to, who's, who's gonna be interviewed at what time. Internet, I'm sorry, interview questions. I've gotten a lot of input from the board and the screening committee. I've got some suggested questions. And so basically, what I've done is I have come up with the questions off of the sample that I sent to everyone. I've got the list that everyone sort of identified that way. And then I have a list of suggested interview questions from screening committee members and board members. So tomorrow, I'm gonna send that out to you guys with some instructions on, okay, now we've got these two sets, now we're gonna pick questions off of that. And we'll do it just the same way that you picked the, the questions off the, the sample I sent. Email me individually with your choices, and I'll explain all of this in my email tomorrow. But that's how we're gonna identify the interview questions ahead of time. And I will send you the final version and in a form that will allow you to write notes as you're observing the interviews. I'm also gonna send over a tracking sheet that will let you rank each interviewee as you go. So you're, you've done your first interview, that's your number one, you don't have anything to compare it to. After your second interview, you're gonna rank those two, who's number one, who's number two. Third interview, okay, now let's rank again, after seeing all three, who's one, who's two, who's three? And at the end, it, it's a really good way of starting the deliberation and keeping it all sort of ranked as you go, especially because we're doing this over three days. So that's another thing that I will be sending you. Any questions about interviews or interview questions?
I have a question about interview questions. So when you send us the lists, these are ranked, not ranked, but show, these, you've compiled based on our preferences. So some will be used and some won't be used. So the ones that are used for this round of interviews means that the leftovers are available for the next interview? Is that how that works?
Possibly, but typically, what happens with final interviews, which is the second interview, you've done telephone reference checks and some other background stuff. And so the questions for the final interview are typically very personalized and kind of address any, you know, things that you wanna cover that you didn't hear in the first interview, anything that popped up during your reference checks, opportunities for those finalists to answer some tough questions. But we can certainly include any questions that weren't utilized in the first round and the second round, if you'd like. But
Okay.
Okay. So for the first round.
I was gonna.
Go ahead.
You go. Okay. So my question is, now that you've mentioned this, the ranking then doesn't go away? Like, the ranking that we come up with at the end of the first interview doesn't go away when we go to the final interview? Like, we will consider that plus the new information?
Yeah, you're gonna consider everything. Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. And so for first round interviews, every candidate gets the exact same set of questions. For the final, it, they're unique to the candidate. And there can be some that are asked of everyone, but it's a really great opportunity to ask those questions that you wanna ask. Okay.
Okay.
Any other questions about interview process questions or anything like that? Okay. So the next thing that we need to talk about is internet checks. We've identified eight candidates, and at this point, we're gonna have you do an internet check, a social media check on these candidates, so that if there are any red flags that pop up, we can address them in that first interview. And while we have to ask all the candidates the same questions, we are still allowed to ask follow-up questions. So what that looks like is, say, you do an internet check on candidate A, and you read some information in a newspaper article that makes you wonder, you know, I wanna know more about this, this is a red flag for me. So what we would do is you would, you will send that information to me, and only to me, at this time. I will draft up a potential follow-up question, and then we're gonna meet. This is, now I get it, Steve. We have to work in time before our interviews to go over internet checks. Sorry, folks, I may have to adjust our interview schedule timeline a little bit more because we're gonna debrief these internet checks before the interview. And your last interview question, if you, if you recall, is gonna be something along the lines of, are there any professional skeletons in your closet that we may find during our background check? And if candidate A doesn't address the newspaper article that the board member found when they did an internet check, this is a great opportunity to ask as a follow-up question. So let's first go over conducting the internet check, and then I'll look back at the, the schedule for the interviews and work that in. So I emailed you guys, the, there's a PDF of conducting internet check, internet check do's and don'ts, if you will. So I'm gonna, I'm gonna share that on my screen right now.
I'm sorry, Sarah, I have a question for you.
Yes.
I'm sorry, we, as a board, are doing the internet checks and social media checks? We have to do all that research?
Um, yeah, so basically, what I'm gonna do is ask for volunteers amongst the board to do those internet checks. And the reason is because this gives you an opportunity then to see this information as a board member through your board member lens, knowing whether or not, you know, is this something that's going to be important to my community, to the staff of the district? And because, you know, you need to know if it's a red flag for, for you as a board member. So you've got eight candidates, and we can, you know, break it up however you would like. Typically, we just ask if there are any board members who are comfortable doing it, if they wanna volunteer, and then we just sort of distribute the checks, the candidates amongst those who volunteer. And then, like I said, we'll, we'll do a debrief before the interviews.
Sarah, I, I just wanna say that I think we went through, actually, if we do the review on some of these candidates and find something to discuss, it's a little, I know we did it a little bit different with the interim, where, and I guess, you know, I'm just hoping, for the sake of all of us and the candidates, that there isn't too many skeletons. I sort of wish we knew that prior, but I guess there's rules and laws against that because, you know, there's some people I think that we're really feeling good about. And now we're gonna do this part of it. So I don't know. I, I sort of have mixed feelings about it, but I understand it's part of the process. And it has to be done. I don't know, I'm just saying that, and maybe I'm, it's late, and maybe, you know. But I just, I wish we had known some of this, I guess, before the candidate. I don't know.
Well, I think before we decided who to interview.
Yeah.
I mean, does that, I mean, that, you know.
I don't know.
Could be a candidate that, you know, is, you know, a great candidate that should be on that list that has no skeletons in the closet, but then we have one that, I don't know. I don't, I, I just find it weird.
It's very difficult.
Uncomfortable.
Is, is there, is there laws that, that encourage boards like ourselves to just look at things in an unbiased and just look at the facts as opposed to the skeletons in the closet, or, I don't know.
Well, no. Best practices certively. The reason why we don't have you do background checks, internet checks, rather, on the candidates before you determine who you're gonna interview is because you, you're supposed to be basing that decision on what they have supplied you with in their application. Also, there were 28 applications, and one could argue that doing an internet check on a candidate that really never had a shot at getting an interview was a little bit of a waste of time. We adjusted how we handled internet checks, in part, based on the experience during your interim search because the feedback we received was that you wanted to know this information prior to interviewing the candidates. And so by doing it this way, we found it to be the most efficient way of getting that information without spending an exorbitant amount of time doing it on literally everyone. And this way, it also gives the candidates an opportunity to address or answer your questions based on something that might be found later on, and an opportunity to get to that information now. You know, if you're uncomfortable doing an internet check, you know, it's possible that there's, you know, other members on the board who, who are comfortable with it. Does, does anyone wanna weigh in on, on their thoughts there?
I mean, I'm happy to look up a few of them. If we're breaking it up to, to lighten the load, I can do that. I'll just cross my fingers and toes that I don't find anything, but I will check.
Okay.
I mean, some of them, whatever you guys wanna do, if somebody else wants to do it, that's great, too.
I can do two. I mean, if we have eight, I can do two.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, I'm happy to volunteer.
Thank you, Jennifer.
Yeah, Sarah, can you roughly describe what an, what an internet search?
Yes, let me, um, let me go back to sharing my documents. Give me just a second to get this up on the screen. And I did email this over to you guys, but odds are you didn't have a chance to go through it. So we created this guide, sort of do's and don'ts on conducting an internet and social media search, very similar to the screening do's and don'ts. And obviously, we want you to keep an open mind and consider the source. Is, is the information reliable? Obviously, there's a lot of stuff on the internet, and there's a lot of people's personal opinions, blogs, which, whatnot. And what we would ask of you to do is really check for newspaper articles and, you know, things that the, that the candidate has, you know, personally tweeted, if you will, or posted on Instagram or their Facebook, if there's anything there that rubbed you the wrong way. But we also have to be careful when looking at the internet and social media that you're not making any personal decisions or opinions based on protected class information. And that is stuff that you will find by looking up someone's name on the internet. You're gonna most likely see their age, their gender, you might learn their gender identity, their marital status, physical disability, you know, their race. You could learn their religion, their sexual orientation, and those are all things that you cannot discriminate against. So we have to be very careful, and that's one of the reasons this, this, this discrimination and protected class information is one of the reasons why it's best not to do these checks before you look at, at an applicant's application materials. And make sure you're asking yourself if the information that you're seeing is relevant to their potential role as superintendent. Don't believe everything you read on the internet, I think we all know that. And don't always assume that third-party information is accurate. You want to verify, if possible, from multiple sources. And, and please don't automatically disqualify a candidate based on one seemingly bad piece of information. Take notes. Like I said, you will debrief this with the rest of your board, and anything that you write down will need to be kept and archived. And so at some points, I'll be gathering all of your, your paperwork and materials, and any notes you take on these internet, social media checks will be a part of that.
Sarah, just for a moment, too, so you're gonna be able, what, what we do, and, and I was going to say, I'm happy to review the collective seven and eight, if you want, if we're breaking it up in two.
And, and, and it. Please don't, don't use names, just candidate numbers. Yeah, I know, it's super easy to make that mistake, Lori, don't worry about it.
I'm very sorry.
Okay.
We slipped out, okay.
Okay, so you, you're volunteering to do candidate seven and candidate eight?
Very much so.
Okay.
And, and so any information, if found, I run it by you first, so you can, you can tell me yes, no, yes, no.
Correct. So basically, what I'll, what I, what I'm gonna ask of those folks who are gonna conduct these searches is if you see something that is alarming to you or a red flag, something that you want addressed, let me know, and I'll need to know, you know, some details about it. And then I will draft up at least one potential follow-up question, and then we'll go over that as a board prior to the interview, and make sure that the board, yes, we wanna ask this question, and I'll, I'll help, you know, guide you through how to do that appropriately.
Okay.
Okay. So, you know, not every candidate is gonna have an online presence, and that's not necessarily a bad thing. And if, if you have a concern about an applicant based on something you read on the internet, obviously, this is an opportunity for us to ask them about it in an interview before we make any final decisions based on that information. We don't want to disqualify a potential candidate solely on information found on the internet. And as you're going through and doing these checks, if you have questions, obviously, as always, just give me a call, and, and I'll help you through it all. So I know I, I kinda went through that a little fast as we are a little late in the evening, and I don't wanna keep you guys too much longer. Are there questions about internet checks and these internet, social media do's and don'ts?
No. I've got a question for you. Are, last time you guys did some work as well, and I know, I believe there's a background check that's gonna take place as part of your service. What, are you going to be providing any of this, or is it entirely reliant upon our finding it?
Um, for the internet and social media checks, we're having the board members present that to the board. Odds are, if there's something out there, we probably already know about it. And if, if it isn't revealed in some fashion, we'll, we'll guide you to it so you do know about it. In terms of the background check, the official background check, we do that on the finalists. So after the first round of interviews, once the board's identified who's moving on in the process, that's when we're gonna run our background checks. And if something comes up on that, yes, we'll definitely let you know that as well.
And, and when we're looking at a finalist, are, do you have a number in mind that represents finalists? Are you talking like the top two or three or whatever?
Essentially, yes. It's those who are going to move on to what we call the, the finalist phase. And that's typically when school is in session and we're not under social distancing. There's, there's site visits involved, and a finalist Site visits involved and a finalist forum and tours of the schools and a community meet and greet and all of that. And, and yes, typically, we say anywhere from two to four finalists is a, is a good estimate.
Oh, good, okay. Thank you, that helps clear it up.
Of course. Any, any other questions about the internet and social media checks?
Are you going to assign, are, are you going to assign those to us, Sarah, by number?
Yes.
Here, here or in an email?
Both. I'll let you know now and then I'll send a, kind of like a recap, if you will. All right, so I know Janet volunteered for two, Jennifer volunteered for two, Lori's doing two. Is there anyone else who wants to do two and then we would have even number? Tom? Okay, great. So, um, well, I, you know, everybody knows candidate number five. What I'd like to do is have someone who is unfamiliar or the least familiar do, do candidates. So candidate seven and eight have been spoken for, if you will. Who, who would you say is the least knowledgeable on candidate number five?
Irv. I think Irv is the least knowledgeable on candidate number five. I don't think he.
Sure, but, um.
I mean, he's not.
Oh, he's not, okay.
Yeah, all right, well, here, I'll just, I'll just throw out some numbers then. Janet, why don't you do number one and number three? Tom, you do number two and number four. And then Jennifer, you do five and six. All right, well, let me just, I've got that down on my notes as well. So I said Jennifer was five and six.
And Janet is one and three.
And then Tom is two and four. Well, I'll send a summary of, of that information out to you guys as well. Right, so. Certainly before the 22nd of April. If it, if you can, if you're able to do it a couple of days ahead of time, assuming there's something to be found, that'll give me time to generate some questions. Yes, so we're doing two candidates. No, three candidates per night and then two on Friday. So let's go ahead and meet at 4:30 Wednesday, Thursday and Friday. If we can, that gives us time to debrief the internet checks. Irv, is any chance that you can phone in at 4:30? No, not until five?
No, I, and I'm hoping I can make all of these. I'm going to be working nights too, so this is going to be a difficult deal.
But. All right, well, we'll, we'll do our best and we'll fill you as much as we can. Can everyone else make 4:30 Wednesday, Thursday, Friday?
Yes.
Yes.
Wonderful, thank you. Okay. And if there aren't any other questions on internet checks and social media checks and interview schedule, then I think we're ready for our last item on the agenda, which is contract parameters. Again, this was something that I sent out to you guys. We have a very handy checklist of things to accomplish while doing contracts, getting ready for your contract negotiations essentially. So that's what that document is. I may have sent, handed it out to you guys before, I honestly just couldn't remember. So I thought, I'll just go ahead and do it again. Let me share my screen that has that up on it. Got so many windows to maneuver here, okay. You guys did a really wonderful job of, you know, getting ready for your contract negotiations during the interim. But you should still do the same for, for the permanent because it is obviously a different position. So essentially, what I'd like is to have this as kind of a rolling agenda item until we're done with the search. So that every time the board meets, if there's something that needs to be gone over, they have an opportunity for that. If you are at a meeting and it's an agenda item and you don't have anything, then you just say no more. So would you, how would you like to start reviewing the contract? Do you want to take what you've got for Paul and look that over again? Or do you want to go back to your more, your most recent permanent superintendent's contract and go over that?
I like to. Paul's was, was pretty, I mean, we, we kind of revisited a lot of that contract. I don't know if people want to crack the thing open and go through it section by section again, but we did that literally like nine, I don't know, nine months ago.
Yeah, you guys did a really thorough job. Shelley, did, did you have, I felt like I heard your voice.
Yeah, I, I guess I, you know, I'm not sure how, you know, we had a really seasoned superintendent, permanent superintendent before he left. And then we, you know, revamped the entire contract for an interim superintendent. So I don't know, you know, if, if we need to have something a little more hefty for a permanent superintendent or not. I guess I'd like to take a look at both of them, just to refresh my memory. Is that, I mean, do we need something a little heftier for a permanent superintendent than an interim? Do you see what I mean? Like, I feel like the language would change a little bit somewhere.
Do, well, Jonathan, what do you think? It's, is that something that might be considered? Because I know what Shelley's saying, but I would assume we would run that through council. I mean, through our legal guidelines.
Which we did last time. I mean, so, so there's words that obviously will change, like interim disappear.
Right, yeah, sure.
Three-year contract instead of a one-year contract. I mean, there's things that are going to change. But I think as far as all the other stuff, I'm sort of guessing, we're not going to have that much to go through. I, maybe what we ought to do is, I mean, I don't want to do it sort of brute force in a meeting unless we have to. So if you guys want to look at, they're both public documents, right? So if you want to look at them and see if there's something that stands out and maybe let me know, maybe then we can decide if we want to, you know, go through it in, in sort of public session as a board. And we'll have to prove, for sure, no matter what. But I mean, to like go through section by section like we did, that seems perhaps like overkill to me.
The only, the only wording that I wonder potentially could be missing, and I don't know if this is typically put in a new superintendent's contract. But, so Andy's old contracts, I mean, those were, you know, as Shelley said, you know, those were kind of longstanding, right? And then the interim one, we know is just for a year. Is there ever any reason to put wording in for a new superintendent that has, is there typically a probationary period? Is there a six-month review? Like, is there anything that's different if it's a new person?
Permanent superintendent, yeah.
Yeah.
When I, so I spoke with a number of people when I was helping to draft the interim one. And actually, the interim one really doesn't have any of those things either, really not. I mean, basically, the way these contracts work, and it'll be very difficult to get anybody to, to sign one that isn't like this, is it's very, very superintendent-friendly, if you will. There's not, you know, probationary periods, there's not, I mean, you can put anything you want in a contract, but you're not going to get them to agree to it, right? I mean, that's, that's the feedback I got when I was processing it, right? They're not typical and Ted, they tend to shy away from signing contracts that look like.
Well, are you saying then that when the contract does come about, we, you're, whoever sits down with this individual, you're going to be looking at all those, I guess, identifying factors anyway? Just.
You'll have several variables that'll be up there. Yeah.
Okay, okay.
All right, so.
Take something as simple as vacation days.
Yeah.
Oh, sure.
A parameter that we put in place, you know.
Right.
But the negotiation is a negotiation, so.
Right, right. Yeah. I just didn't know if there was significant substance change between an interim and a, you know, a seasoned superintendent and then a brand-new permanent superintendent, you know? That, I feel like they're kind of in between those two, you know? So maybe there's not, maybe it's just, you know, send out a general, or, you know, a pretty general one and then you negotiate back and forth.
Yeah. Yeah, I, I seem to recall, and maybe I'm, maybe my memory is faulty, but when we, we made changes in the new interim contract and they seemed a bit, it, it seemed a lot of effort to do that for only a one-year contract. But I think most of us agreed that, well, hey, this is going to be the start of our, of our next contract too.
Right, yeah, okay.
I seem to recall that.
My recommendation, oh, sorry, Tom, I talked over you, go ahead.
No, no, I, I, I think our interim contract is going to be very similar. The current contract we have is going to be very similar to our, our permanent one, just with some dates and language change.
Yeah, okay.
Okay.
That's, that's my recollection.
Okay, oh, okay.
So my recommendation, yes, Jennifer?
The one thing that I wonder about is we talked about the length of the contract. I think our council, previously, it had been a three-year contract. And our council had, had talked to us about the potential for doing a one-year rolling contract. And so I don't know where, how that works out. I'm assuming that's also something that's negotiable. But I think that the interim contract has had the one year, obviously, because it was interim. So anyway, that's just a, a point that I wanted to bring up in case we wanted to discuss it more.
Thank you. My recommendation, because it is so late in the evening, would be to ask Debbie to send over to the board, each board member, a copy of the current superintendent's contract. Board members, look it over, generate a list of questions or any edits, updates, whatever that you have. And then we will discuss it again during the interviews. Go over everyone's questions, the board can talk about those. Determine what it is that they want to, to, you know, any changes they want to make. And then ultimately, yes, the district attorney will, will review this. And that possibly, Jennifer, revisit that one-year renewal versus a two-year, three-year, et cetera. How does that sound?
Well, it sounds good to me.
Great, all right. Any other questions before I let you guys go and have a lovely evening?
All right. Well, thank you for the good meeting. I appreciate, appreciate all your work, thank you.
Of course, thank you guys, you did a great job. So just expect at least one lengthy, if not several, emails from you over the next few days. And if you have questions, just let me know.
Very good.
Thank you, Sarah.
Thank you so much.
Good night, everybody.
That meeting adjourned.
All right, thank you, bye-bye.
Thanks, bye.